Call this meeting in Harriman City Council Order, August 7, 2018. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Wright, followed by the place list of the flag. Councilman Wright?
Yeah, would you join me, please? Heavenly Father, we ask you bless the name of this tonight. We thank you in the name of all those who have been here for this meeting. We pray for the council and mayor and various levels of city officials, especially the ones that are sitting here in this room. And give us the wisdom together to make the issues that were before us and require for special votes and for all the recently elected city candidates. You constantly be proud of them.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great majesty of the Constitution.
Call, please.
Chris Sager.
Here.
Betty Howard. Tim Johnson.
Here.
Ken Indy. Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonnie Wright.
Here. Our board, need a motion to approve the minutes of the G.I. 17, 2018 meeting. Make the motion.
Second.
For Councilman Johnson, say it for Councilman Russell, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Doors open for discussion. Beaming, call, please.
Chris Sager.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, need a motion to approve the minutes of a special call meeting, July 24, 2018. Question, question for Councilman Mayor.
Second.
Say it for Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Doors open for discussion. Call, please.
Chris Sager.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, the motion to approve the pay the salaries.
Motion.
Motion for Councilman Russell.
Second.
Second for Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Doors open for discussion. Call, please.
Chris Sager.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, I'm here for delegation. If you'd like to address council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Floyd Lawson here. You know by my name, it's that time of year back to school bash. This will be our 15th year. That's right, we might have the title for the longest run of program here in Harriman. At the bash, we try to give out school supplies. And when we say school supplies, we put out other things, other learning tools like laptops and tablets and things of that sort. We also have gifts and prizes we give away as well. Last year, if you remember, we started the Superwoman Award for the outstanding young lady in the middle school. This year, we have another winner. We'll be awarding her the belt, the title at this year's bash. And the passion guys have been there, support us, and we're coming still, can't get you to support us again this year for this year's bash. Of course, before we ever do that, we have to turn in the financial report. The Back to School Bash is August 12th at 6:00 at the Riverfront Park. I've contacted the department and told them of the bash so that they might be down there when we get there and all. But, well, there we are.
How much are you asking for?
Normally, you guys apply $500. The winner of the Superwoman Award, that's what she wins as well, is a title belt, $500 and a pizza for a month. One pizza a month for a year.
Okay. Council's heard the request. It's council as to what you want to do.
I may can motion to another, another round of the future.
Second. Motion for Councilman Taylor, second for Councilman Russell, Councilman Taylor.
It's a good thing you do, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Russell.
Appreciate you, Floyd.
Thank you.
Doors open for discussion. Let me make sure I understand this. The city will not disperse a check until you turn in the financial.
The financial report, that's correct. Every year, I have to turn in a financial report. That is right.
Any other questions? Call, please.
Chris Sager.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. Anyone else like to address council? While we're hitting on this, I want to say something real quick. What we're trying to do from the city standpoint, and I hope that everybody that's watching this stuff, if you want to have a request from the city that pertains to money, we'd like those requests made before we do the budget. Once we do the budget, it's hard to go back and start backing up and redoing and redoing and redoing. So, people that is asking for requests, we need that list probably before we start working on budget, so we can put it into next year's budget. I know we can amend the budget, but it gets tough. Now, there's some cases that can't be helped, it just happened, but in a lot of cases, we need that upfront in a way we can, we've got the money in there now, and we start it out. Anybody else like to address council? Not, we're going to reports. HEB.
All right, so just to give you an update first on our new office remodel, we had a pre-bid meeting today. We've got five potential contractors looking at the project. Bid opening is on August 21st. We also, in addition to that major project, we have a bid opening for HVAC replacement until week next week. I believe it's on Tuesday. Look forward to getting started on that, hopefully getting moved in this winter. So, electric projects we've got going on, Run Street lighting continues on the Bonia Street now, and may or may not be a little bit of difficulty with wiring, so we're kind of checking into that, and we'll work with Kevin as we, as we give more information. Riverfront Park lighting upgrades, we're doing some work for you guys there, there's some new photo sales on the security lights that'll allow the cameras to work all the time. Gas leak surveys starting today, so if you see, let's go, our contractors are out and about, that's what they're doing, this is an annual occurrence. And we continue to paint gas meters. A new project that's sort of up in the air, we just found out about, very unusual, there's a T-Dot Bridge replacement or a bridge repair project that's been bid on South Run Street, right in front of the Crystals, on the, going toward Rockwood on that side. And that's going to affect our gas and our sewer lines, and we were provided notice after they already had a contractor in place. It's very unusual, the timeline, and not really sure if that's going to delay, it almost certainly will delay the bridge project, but not really sure if it's going to cost them enough to resit it. So, just wanted the city to be aware that that was an issue. Water system, we've been spending our CDBT grant money, we've, first contractors wrapping up work at Birch and Oak and on Spencer Drive. We've just awarded another contract for Howard and Tarkley's and water line replacements there, as well as water line replacement near Jerry Duncan Chevrolet. And we'll have a little bit more money left to spend depending on how much they ask for repairs coming up. We were very excited, a week or so ago, we got to, we got to receive our check from TBA at our water plant for some high service pumps that we replaced. They came and gave us a check for about $31,000. And we, busy month, we have one more bid opening this month, the August 23rd, and that's for clarifier, clarifiers that are sewer plant that are getting repainted, some of the metal parts are being replaced and upgraded. That's all we've got for HEB.
Kansas, are we done, or have we done any work on these lots, parks, and precincts?
Along Run Street? Yes.
Did we, did we take the speaker system down?
I'm not sure, Mr. Wright, I can certainly look into that.
Yeah, because we need it up. That's the way they would expect it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right, you can't face him.
Kansas, those couple lots that the base was tore up, y'all got those in, they got all, you got all the lots in downtown, right?
Along Run Street, I believe we're completed. Along the Bonia Street, we had to order some new bases.
Okay.
And there, last I heard, they were installing those now, and there's some question about wiring.
I had two business owners contact me a few weeks ago wanting to know if they're going, I guess that, they're probably working on it now, so they should get it done here pretty soon.
Yeah, I believe we've been working with Kevin Hounds, you guys may have actually ordered the bases, and when I came in, we started building solutions.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'll have a better update next month for you.
Okay, thanks.
And just on that, real quick, on what Councilman Wright had asked you about speakers, I had talked to Kevin about it, and I think Kevin had had you all hold up on it because he was looking for speakers, from what I'm told, so it may be coming from Kevin soon.
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Fire Department.
Very little thing I got, got the monthly stats in front of me. I also talked to the sales rep for Pierce today. They're looking about three weeks, that is, it should be here. So, it should be after you place it in the box before the inspection, final inspection, it's about three weeks out. That's all I have, I'll take any questions if we got any.
David, make the fire department.
How is it coming down there with your training facility?
We have not started on it. I tell you what we're going to do, we're going to do the own house, use that money towards getting that lane clear, and start that project down there probably in the fall.
Okay. Yeah, build a lot better than?
Yeah. Build it easier to operate, far as, I feel like it's supposed to be dead and died out, and we're working on better.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Police Department.
You have your stats in front of you there. One thing I would like to point out with your stats, you'll notice on the last page, our drug arrest numbers over past 36, or 32 months. In May of this year, we had the highest drug arrest numbers that we've had in over three years at 16. That dropped down to nine in June, but I'm proud to say, on behalf of the department, that last month in July, they were back up to 16 again. Our officers are working very diligently continually on the drug issue. Also, you'll notice in your snapshot that you have there, it outlines many of those drug arrests in detail for you to review. Also, today, school started, we had extra officers go into schools, try to make the children feel welcome there, and each one walk around a little bit. The other thing that we're working on, we should have the LEIC website up in about six weeks. That's the website, we're ready to get extra equipment, such as bulldozers, vehicles, that sort of thing, working very diligently on that. One of the things I've discussed with the fire chief is, you know, us doing some type of joint venture down there with the fire tower and stuff, you know, police officers, they got to climb those things too, as part of their physical fitness, and that would allow us to perhaps get some bulldozer type equipment that we could use to help with that facility down there. It's something that we're also working on. Tuesday, the camera folks come out, we finally got the Comcast cables installed down there, we've got the old lights up. I'd like to personally thank Tim Johnson, who helped tremendously with this project. Alan Dickman informed me that they're coming Tuesday to actually start the initial part of the install. Of course, there'll be some technical stuff, so it won't, it won't be Tuesday they're up and running, but there'll be a major phase of the install beginning on Tuesday.
Do you know what time they'll be there, or how it's going to be down there?
I don't know, I'll get with Alan Dickman on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll find out for sure.
All right.
Can you highlight this next?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think you can see on there, we got our CPU unit up and running now, they're working hard, they're out there, working very hard on the drug issue, so I'd like to see that number keep rising, or at least stay very consistent.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Special events.
I included in your guys' report, a little breakdown of the cobbler festival that we had about two weeks ago. We had, I was really pleased with the attendance, I'm estimating we had about 800 to 1,000 people come, and I think about 40% of the people that came weren't from Run County. So, that's people coming into the county visiting, shopping here, maybe spending some sales tax here. We sold just under 500 tickets to sample the cobbler, and we ended up with 15 teams and 30 vendors for the event. And then, we had a lot of help from the community, they helped install a last minute power outlet for us, and the Parks and Rec helped get the cobb, or get the park ready, and then the golf course supplied some golf carts and stuff, and the street department were down there helping. And then, we also got to use the prisoner crew to pressure wash the gazebo, so if y'all haven't been down there recently, it looks, looks significantly better than it had prior to that. We have crews in coming up this weekend, Saturday, from 3 to 6 at Riverfront Park. And Grape for Harriman's just around the corner, our vendor application is actually August 16th, so it's coming up next week. So, if y'all haven't known anybody that's wanting to do that, that deadline's pretty approaching.
Anybody have anything for the special members?
I just want to say, great job on the cobbler festival, that's really turned into a fantastic event.
Thank you. Public Works?
Thank you, Mike. See, on King Drive, we replaced some tile on King Drive, somebody had a hot water heater hooked up, so we had to repair it on King Drive, patched it. We've had seven junk quarters this month paid that we picked up, trying to keep up with the mowing. See, we mowed the industrial house, Pine Hills, we're trying to keep it mowed down. Pine Hills, the Sampson House, trying to do it. Painted stop bars on Margrave and Crescent, the three-way stops, and we got it done. We patched Hillside Drive, Meat Drive, Irwin Drive, and Old Run Street, patched down by the post office where it fell in, down south by Rocky Top, where tile caved in on State So, we patched Carlock, Child's Road, Love Drive, Hacker Circle, Fair Martin Hager. And we're trying to cut back some of the limbs and stuff on some of these roads. So far, we've got Hillwood, I think Tim lives over there, we got Brazil and Russell, and we're staying pretty busy. And Animal Control, month of July, we've had 25 cows and picked up 60 animals.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Langley?
I'd like to thank Mr. Langley, he patched a hole in front of the community center for me. Appreciate you getting on that, it's a quick drive.
And thanks for cleaning all that overgrowth up there on Hillwood. I woke up one morning, heard that thing out there raring up, and I didn't realize how bad it was. It looked like a whole new place over there, where he cleaned all that off. It really looks good. Thanks, Dr.
Bad part about that was, it's about 2:00 here, for me, so.
Oh, I heard about it.
Thanks, sir. Library.
The summer reading program, the regular summer reading program, end, at the end of June, but then we had a family reading program where the parents are encouraged to read to the children and listen to the children, and back to them. We had a good turnout for that, and it was Mindy Adkison's and her family won it with $6,176, and they won Donaway tickets, to get to her to Donaway. And then, we have, had a teen program, and Anna Garland won it, she won $100 dress tickets, certificate to Walmart, she read 24 hours, even though it's 3 days for the night. The adult reading program is still going on, we'll be drawing names for it. August is 17th, and our computer classes, they're still, but they have one next, we'll go on throughout the year. We've got a book sale at the end of the month, last two weeks of August, downstairs, the children's department reset up, they're discarding books and donated books for sale. So, if anyone would want to pick up some books for the cabinet to sell. Anything else? Any questions?
That storage building, you need?
Yes.
Is there anything in the budget? You putting anything in the budget?
No, I didn't ask for it, because I was just thinking about raising money for it, so I've been trying to do it. That's why I had Dr. Seuss saying, we're having a play, another play in the fall, to try to raise money for it. I didn't think I was for money for it, I just am working on raising money for it. Now, I hope to use the good self to go in for it. The children's department is, as Bill will tell you, we've got way too much stuff in the storage room, and we need to get cleaned out, and we're finding another storage building so that our children's department doesn't continually have to create things for each problem, she can keep them and store them, and bring them back out and use them. Because right now, the storage room is full of that kind of stuff.
It's like that.
And we still do have a little bit of leaking coming in on the side near the fire department with the floor, that's it. But all the rest is fine, and thank you all for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Code Enforcement.
Y'all have a copy of the, my report, some of the calls I've been working on over the past month. Also included a snapshot, kind of following what the police department is doing, just kind of, some highlights on things that I've been doing. Any questions?
Questions for Code Enforcement?
Oh, we're just involving a lot of activities, closing out the year, budgeting for the new year, preparing reports for our auditors, for our annual audit, and visit.
Does anybody have anything for Dr. Currie? I'm sorry. City Attorney.
I just want to reiterate what code enforcement is doing and trying to clean up properties. I've talked to him several times, I met with the county building code inspector today, and they gave me some information to, time has run out for a lot of people to clean it up themselves, so we're going to get paperwork ready to file at the court and move forward.
Anybody have anything for the city? As you all see, city manager is not here tonight, he is still under the weather, along with Councilman Holly, so he will not have a report tonight, he'll do his report, I know, next week. This time, we'll go into our own business, discuss and possibly approve final reading on ordinance 0718-01, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amended ordinance number 0817-01, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the city of Harriman, Tennessee, that fiscal year begin July 1st, 2017, and end in June 30th, 2018. Motion carries.
We read the ordinance, so we're going to speak to it again.
Thanks, I may keep y'all down in the first one. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion for Councilman Mayor, say it, for Councilman Russell, Councilman Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Doors open for discussion, if you have any questions for Dr. Currie.
Nothing, change in the sixth week, in the first.
There's one title change, it was under solid waste management, page 3, 331 is gas, oil, diesel, and grease, rather than uniforms, that's the change.
We have a discussion. Call, please.
Chris Sager.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, we're here for the council, Councilman Russell.
I have nothing at this time.
Councilman Johnson.
I have nothing.
Councilman Wright.
I'd like to, you know, publicly thank Representative Calhoun, Senator Vega, and Devin Dutton, Jim Henry, for showing the recent grants we received during this time. It played a big part in it. And also, we're not to congratulate, double to, the real active and moving ones that are elected to the county commission, city council.
I've got a couple things. August 10th, which I think is Friday at 12:00, the highway in front of T-Dot going toward Rockwood will be named in the memory of Trooper Floyd Minnick, so many council members are going to go down, that's at 12:00 on Friday. The department heads, real quick, while we're in an open meeting, I'd like to ask a favor of the ones that bring reports, police department, fire department, codes enforcement stuff, if you all could maybe get those in our packet for Fridays, or send them to us ahead of time. There's no way we can read them and ask you questions about them, and some of them may not make it back for the next meeting, so if we could get it ahead of time, so we could go through it, and if there's any questions, we can go ahead and ask you instead of trying to chase you down every week to find out what's going on, that'd be very appreciated. And to just elaborate a little bit on what Councilman Wright said, in the last month, Harriman has been blessed, just with the city, not counting HEB and what they've been getting, but we've received over a million dollars in grants just in this one month. We just, we received the Parks and Rec grant for 400 something thousand, we just received a Sidewalk grant for over 600,000. So, that's helping change what we do, and we're very appreciative of everybody that works on it and what they do, but it just shows that we are moving forward. It's exciting times here in Harriman, and I'm tickled to death to be a part of it. One other thing, at the end of this, I'd like to ask council to maybe wave the general rule to look at ordinance 0618-01, the sales tax ordinance, and I'll ask that at the end of the meeting.
Can you give me that ordinance?
New business. First item, discussing possible proof resolution R0818-01, a resolution to be entitled, the resolution of the city of Harriman and the Harriman Utility Board authorizing the purchase of natural gas from the Tennessee Energy Acquisition Corporation, approving execution and delivery of a GASSA supply agreement and other documents relating to said purchase, consisting of assignment of certain obligations under the GASSA supply agreement to, in connection with the insurance of bonds by the Tennessee Energy Acquisition Corporation and related matters. A lot of reading. Kansas, you want to hit on that?
Sure, I'll try to explain it in simple terms, but it is difficult even for me to understand, but when we're purchasing gas, we are using a rates, or a gas purchasing consultant, and that's the Tennessee Energy Acquisition Corporation. They're a, they're a cooperative type company, and they've been helping us for many years. We are in existing, we are under an existing agreement now to purchase gas at a rate of 400 units a day, and we get a discount on that. That will be expiring in 2025. The agreement that I'm asking you all for approval on, our board has already approved, but it does also require the city's approval. It's a 30-year agreement, which starts today, but our part of it doesn't start until our current agreement expires. And what it does is, for the difference between 2025 and the remainder of the 30 years, we just continue to get a discount off the market rate of gas. The discount will, will vary some, and the first several years, they expect it to be about 35 cents per unit, and then, it will just depend on the bond rates at the time. At no time would it be less than 20 cents per unit off the market rate. So, we hope to actually get maybe 50, 55 cents, like we've, we've been able to get in the These don't, these don't come along very often, but I guess it is a big commitment, the only danger would be if the city was to want to sell off the gas system for some reason.
Make the motion, approve. Motion for Councilman Mayor, say it.
Second.
Say it for Councilman Johnson, Councilman Taylor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yours, yours will be a 30-year, pardon?
The 30-year would start now, but our, ours would start in 2025, and then the remainder of the 30 years, so that, can't be that right now, on the spot, maybe 23 years.
But you are getting a good discount on it?
Yeah.
With that, that's all I've got. Doors open for full discussion. Call, please.
Chris Sager.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possible proof, Chris Lee to attend a three-week transition schedule, changes status from civilian employee to law enforcement employee at a cost of $825.
Yes, sir. What this is about, currently, we do not have a firearms instructor. We contacted the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission in Nashville, which is the regulatory authority for training. Chris Lee has firearms qualification. the regulatory authority for training. Chris Lee has firearms qualifications to be an instructor in firearms. We were hoping to submit him to post so that he could be our firearms instructor. As we heard, they do not have one. The alternative would be to send officers to firearms school, which, which would cost significantly, significantly more at $825. Post came back and said that because he, his status with post is a civilian employee, that he cannot be a firearms instructor, that his status with post would have to be a law enforcement employee in order to be a firearms instructor. If we, if council were to approve this tonight, this is not going to make him a police officer out on the street doing all that. He would still be doing the role that he's doing now. He'll, he'll be doing the same job. But the difference would be is he would be able to do firearms qualifications for officers as far as the police officer standard and training commission is concerned.
Want to make a motion to approve it?
Please. Motion for Councilman Johnson, second. Councilman Wright, Councilman Johnson.
He does a great job over at the police station helping Kenny and everyone else. He's got a huge workload that he carries over there. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Councilman Wright, please. Floor is open for discussion.
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. That's all on the agenda. And I'd like to ask to waive the general rule to discuss ordinance 0618-01.
Motion.
Second.
Motion for Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Ayler, Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayler. All the papers, I, Post, Blackstone. Motion carries. We approved this and had this put on the ballot for November's election. What this is, is the sales tax to be going from 9.5 to 9.75, 9.75. With everything that's went on in the last two, three months with taxes, with everything else, I personally feel like it's a bad time to be putting this on the ballot. I'm one person. But from what I'm hearing from people, taxes right now are just very instant no matter what. And we haven't got out and started explaining it. With all the grants that's came in, I don't think we're going to have the time to really get it to the people exactly what we're doing with this money. And I'm afraid if we put it on the ballot and it fails, it basically kills it. I would rather hold off, let us get time to, to get it out to the people what we're doing. And don't try to go in a battle with all these other taxes that we're trying to put on the, the November election. And, you know, a lot of people feel like they're taxed enough. And they just, they don't understand exactly what this tax is. And I can explain it to them in face, but it doesn't. Some people, it doesn't change. I'm still for this tax. I think it's a good tax. I think that we need it for our roads and our infrastructure. But I just feel like if we go forward, at this point in time, we just don't have resources and stuff to do it out there. And we need it. And that's it. So I leave it to you, council.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion for Councilman Ayler to have it taken off the ballot for November election. Second for Councilman Russell. Councilman Ayler.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Mayor. I think that on, on every aspect, it's very important that we have the money that would be generated by this. I think the part that people don't understand that is the most important part, is that most of this money would be paid by people who pass through Harriman. It's not the citizens of Harriman. That's the number one thing. Whenever we try to increase tourism, the reason we do that is so that we can have people come into this town and spend money so that we can use this tax to build, rebuild our infrastructure. That's it. That's why we do it. So I hope that it comes back on the, on the ballot at some point. But in order to get that word out to everyone, everyone that's watching, please talk about it with your friends and family so that we can, we can get this passed. Because I really do believe we need money that's earmarked towards that kind of improvement to our infrastructure.
Councilman Russell?
I reiterate what Mr. Ayler so eloquently said.
Floor is open for discussion.
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. So there will be no tax on the November ballot from the city of Harriman. Anything else need to come forward, council? Motion to approve?
Motion.
All the papers, right?
Aye.